Excellent, okay. All right.
Recording in progress.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and I'll ask the city attorney to report out a closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and community. This afternoon at 4:00, the city council met regarding the city manager recruitment and received information and provided direction to its relevant staff.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll... Huh, this is a bit out of order. Um... Let me make sure, hang on. Yeah, we said public comment in the wrong spot of the agenda, but I think we can handle it. Um, so that, we're back in open session. We've done that report. I'll ask the clerk... Actually, do we need to establish a quorum again?
Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Here.
Mayor Terry.
Here. Thank you for that. With that, I'll ask the clerk to read the television announcement, please.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will air on Thursday, October 20th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, October 21st at 6:00 p.m. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight, I'd ask our city attorney if he could lead us in the pledge, well, because the picture of the chambers, to me, is really small, and I'm struggling to make... Oh, actually, no. I take it back, since we actually have him here now, and I can see people standing up, and I see a six-foot county supervisor. Supervisor Natoli would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd ask the audience to remain standing for our invocation that tonight will be presented by Julie Steinbach of the United Methodist Church. So with that, Mr. Natoli, if you'd lead us?
(Inaudible) to the city attorney. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have Julie in the room already?
We do.
Oh, she's there, front and center. Julie, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. Let us pray. Almighty God, we are gathered here this evening to keep Rancho Cordova a great place to live, work, and play. You have gifted us with abundant wisdom and talent to tackle our city's issues, encourage us to support each other, and treat everyone with respect, motivate us to reach competent decisions that will positively affect our community. Let us rejoice in our diversity and continue to push for equitable solutions to benefit all of our city residents. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Julie.
Amen. Thank you, Julie. And so with that, we will move on to item 12.1 in our presentation calendar. We'll start with the proclamation in support of Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month, and that'll be presented by Councilmember Pulipati.
Okay. Do we have Chris?
George Wernet or Chris Bell?
Oh. Well, in recognition of the Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month, I am really honored to give you the proclamation to celebrate the Manufacturing Day, which you celebrate on the first Friday of the month of October to showcase their... In an effort to educate the community about manufacturing career and opportunities, I know manufacturing is a huge opportunity for jobs, and I think that one of the key is about 80,000 or plus for manufacturing jobs in the area?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, okay.
Not trying to be too technical.
Well, it's one of the most important growing industries in the United States, serving people globally in their daily activities of living, working, and growing. And the city of Rancho Cordova appreciates all our manufacturers and commends them for their commitment to the betterment of the city of Rancho Cordova. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize October 2022 as Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month in the city of Rancho Cordova, California. So in behalf of the mayor, I have set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Rancho Cordova to call October as a Manufacturing Awareness and Appreciation Month. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. On behalf of the Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance, we are very happy to accept this and thank the council for recognition of manufacturing and what it does for our future. Myself, as chairman of TryTool, Inc., we are approximately 50 years in Rancho Cordova, and what do we do? We help the nuclear navy run quietly. We help space exploration happen safely. We make sure that we get clean water, that we get safe medical supplies, and our paper face masks are manufactured out there. So as just one company here in Sacramento amongst the many manufacturers that support our economy, that bring in the money, that help our students and our children to be educated, we are manufacturers, and we support all jobs that are possible out there. So as the Manufacturing Alliance from SVMA, we are very happy to support the future generations, because if our children don't know why a manhole cover or why turning a steering wheel on a car makes it turn, then we're not going to have a future. So let's get back to the basics. Some kids don't go to college. A lot don't. And those are the ones that are our future, that we need to support for the technical education while the engineers and doctors go off to do their job. So on behalf of SVMA, behalf of TryTool, and behalf of Americans everywhere, thank you for this acceptance of what we do to make this country great.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any public comments on 12.1?
No. Thank you, gentlemen. And we want to congratulate TryTool. Some of us took a tour out there not too long ago, and it was absolutely fascinating. And if I'm not... And if I'm correct, you really like to hire local young people. And so they should walk in the front door and say, "Hi, I'm here, and I need a job."
And I come to work on time.
That was a good one. And dressed.
Yes.
Is your onsite training working well for you? You were sort of at a transition phase when we did the tour.
Yes, so from the TryTool side, we are doing everything possible, but really, as an organizational side, it's really touching as many people as possible, because not everybody can enter our specific environment of work.
Right.
When we're sending to nuclear power plants, they need to have certain certifications. But for amongst manufacturers, we have a lot of jobs and a lot of opportunity.
But the training, I mean, we specifically were exposed to your training challenges.
Okay.
But like, written large in the industry, how are you meeting the need you have for new employees? Are you finding yourselves short?
We are short by many, by many.
And so the training programs that you need are something we probably need to hear about. And we can assist you with partner agencies in trying to get those done for our kids in this community who could qualify for a lot of those jobs but simply don't have that opportunity.
Well...
Yes.
I do pack up my service as executive director of Sacramento Valley Manufacturing Alliance. And I must let you know, we have built a really good partnership with Cordova High School. They have a really great program called Innovation and Product Design. Wonderful instructor Faith Kaplan, who works really tirelessly on behalf of her students. She was successful in getting three of her students, who graduated last year, hired at one of our local manufacturers, Sarah Tizit. Another one got hired down the road as a welder at J.L. Haley. So, you know, locally, she's doing a great job at the high school level. Nationwide, manufacturing is just facing an overall shortage of qualified workers. There's about 4 million vacancies out there with only the capacity to fill about 2 million of those jobs. A lot of the training, frankly, is done at our community college level, and the community colleges just don't have the capacity to train people fast enough to fill some of these more technical jobs that are out there. So it is an ongoing effort that we are addressing through our pre-apprenticeship programs, through our apprenticeship programs, through our partnerships with adult education, and a lot of outreach into the community, working with our community-based organizations in the region to make people aware of the opportunities that are out there.
So one of the phrases we have around here is that "good enough" is not good enough. We expect great. So I heard four, you know, kids from Cordova getting those opportunities. So the challenge would be, how do we get to 40 instead of four?
It's just a lot of outreach to the employers and making them aware of the training that the students have. If we can upskill the students even more so, you know, there are some of us who would love to see the Cordova program expanded so that it's literally comparable to what's at Folsom High School.
That's the discussion we need to have.
But that's another long-term discussion that we need to have with the school district. I agree.
We have a very good relationship with them. There's no reason we can't get into this area as well. We haven't touched this in a while, I think, as a city, but that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Thank you.
Let's have further discussions on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty, have a good evening.
With that, our second presentation tonight is in recognition of Supervisor Don Natoli. And Don, I'm over 40 years of service to the Sacramento County, and we have Vice Mayor Budge to present him with a proclamation.
Well, we all know Don. And quite frankly, his proclamation is so long that the type got smaller, and I do need to put my glasses on.
Give me the summary.
I don't think so. So tonight, we are... We have the bittersweet pleasure of honoring our outgoing Supervisor Don Natoli for his service to the city of Rancho Cordova since 1944 and before that, under his predecessor.
I wasn't born in 1944.
You're right. Ninety-four.
He didn't start working there then, did he?
Getting old, the tooth, but not quite that old.
You got me. So whereas County Supervisor Don Natoli was elected to the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors in 1994, served seven terms, 28 years, representing the 5th District, which includes the city of Rancho Cordova. And whereas during his tenure, Supervisor Natoli has been an active and visible representative for the residents, businesses, and organizations in the city of Rancho Cordova. And whereas Supervisor Natoli is one of the hardest-working elected officials, he serves on over 20 boards and commissions that focus on infrastructure, transportation, water supply, the American River Youth, the elderly, and housing, to name a few. And I know we're all on boards with Don. And whereas despite the fact that his district is the largest in the geographic area, and he drives the most miles of anybody we know, he represents 350,000 constituents, and he has always attended, participated, and been highly engaged in Rancho Cordova events and important issues affecting Rancho Cordovans. And whereas Supervisor Natoli partnered with the city to ensure that our Mather Veterans Village, a home for 150 homeless and disabled veterans, was built by advocating for and securing the land for this important project. And whereas Supervisor Natoli has a passion for how infrastructure supports economic development and quality of life, and he had a vision for the rehabilitation of Folsom Boulevard and other key corridors in the county. His support and advocacy for Folsom Boulevard improvements directly influenced grants awarded to the city that made this $42 million investment possible. And whereas Supervisor Natoli, despite his many accomplishments, is a very humble person who has truly dedicated his life to serving not only the residents of his home city of Galt and the entire 5th District, but to the city of Rancho Cordova, its residents, its businesses. And so therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Rancho Cordova is honored to have worked with Supervisor Natoli, and we express our sincere appreciation for your dedication and your time and your deep and genuine desire to serve the residents of Rancho Cordova. And so Donald has signed this and personally affixed this seal to the city. And Stacy... I know it's on the desk.
Say, was there something else to give him, too?
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on.
All right, good.
Hang on.
I didn't forget.
So... Yeah. So Don swore me in on the 1st of July, 2003, and it is now my distinct honor to present him with the key to the city of Rancho Cordova, because every door in Rancho Cordova is always open to this wonderful gentleman.
That opens TryTool's door, too. They keyed it for us. It was amazing.
Lots on the doors.
Good job, guys. We'd love to get in anywhere.
Well, thank you, Linda, and thank you, Mayor Terry, and certainly to my colleagues on the council and to the residents of the city of Rancho Cordova. I'm much more comfortable presenting proclamations and resolutions and receiving them, and this is very, very thoughtful. And certainly, having the key to the city, something I will cherish and I value, because I know the meaning behind it. Obviously, this is something that you do with a great deal of thought. So I want to just take just a moment and thank certainly each of you as representatives, I think, as Julie said in her invocation. This city and this community is well-served by an abundance of wisdom and talent. And certainly, the five of you and those that have preceded you and certainly your city staff have worked very hard, not only during the years, nearly 20 years now that this city has been incorporated, but certainly long before that, in making a difference in the lives of those that you represent, those that you serve, and those that we've served together. And I'm really honored to have had the opportunity throughout 44 years with the county of Sacramento to have worked with my predecessor, Toby Johnson, and his service to this community for 16 years, but the past nearly 28 years as your supervisor. And I just, on the way out here this evening, was thinking about all the things, not all the things, but a number of the things that certainly have occurred over the course of, you know, the 44 years, nearly 45. I know that I first met Linda when she was working on De'au Higgins campaign for supervisor, and I was working on Toby Johnson's. And certainly, both De'au and Toby became very best of friends following his election. And I know, again, the spirit that this community, certainly this council embodies, but this community has for wanting to do better, to be better, to be the best that it can be in so many respects. And I think the caring that's been exemplified by this council, by your staff, certainly by your current city manager. I know, and I've had a chance to work with Stacy and Adam in different capacities, and all the folks who, along the way, make a difference in the lives of the people that we serve. And this community is vibrant, has a real tendency, certainly, to work hard, but also to not just roll up the sleeves, but to roll the sleeves and play and have fun and to do things that are memorable for people of all ages and for people from all walks of life. And the diversity in this community, the diversity on this council, and I think just the diversity of opinion that has helped make this community one of the great ones, certainly in our region. And again, I've been so honored to have been a part of community life for so many years and to have, you know, shared and certainly the trials and tribulations, but also in the joy of celebration of the accomplishments and whether it's been the work that's occurred post-closure of a Mather Air Force Base or the work as the city has grown and evolved and the reinvestment that was mentioned here in the resolution along Folsom Boulevard, and the vibrancy, as I said, of the neighborhood and of the people that make this city what it is. And so I'm deeply honored and very grateful for the friendships and for the camaraderie, collegiality, and certainly the good work that's gone into this part of Sacramento County, but certainly to our county as a whole. And there will be challenges for those who will succeed me, but also I know that it's going to be in good hands with the likes of all of you who continue to represent and reflect the views of the citizens of this community, but certainly more broadly, our Sacramento community. So it's with a great amount of appreciation and thankfulness for, again, as I said, for the fulfillment that I've received in my life and being able to serve in public life now for almost 44 years with the county. And I hope to, in retirement, to certainly maintain our friendships and the connectivity that helps this community and other communities in the county that I call home be as best we can in so many respects. And again, with that, I'll just stop. I could go on. You have a long agenda. It's nice to be in between celebration for Garrett's birthday and the celebration of Manufacturing Month. But to be here this evening, to, once again, to join all of you. And again, I look forward to a continued relationship with each of you in a different manner. But I thank you for your friendship and for the ability to have served and serve this community the best I can. And I'll just sum it up by saying that, I've said this many times, but the work of any elected official, you know, is important. The work of a supervisor is hard work at times, but is good work and is for the right reason. And again, it's been a tremendous privilege and honor to have served all of you for all these many years and to call you friends. And I look forward to continuing to service in different capacities in the years to come. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Don.
And thank you for the key to the city.
Stacy, can we start? Are there any public comments for this item?
I think we might have a comment, at least one.
Okay. So let's get... If people need to turn in cards, I'm asking to, in Zoom.
It's just me, Donald, that I'm aware.
Oh, well, hang on. I'll come back to colleagues in a second. Need to make sure that there's no public comment that we missed. And I'm not seeing any... So colleagues, I'll bring it back. David, feel free. Go ahead.
So I could go on for a really long time. I think there'll be a future date when we can probably do that. But not tonight, so I'll just be brief. Don, I think you epitomize the absolute best in public service that I've ever seen in my lifetime. Now, that incredible public service that you've put out there and that dedication you've put into your district is only marred by one event, and that was appointing me 23 years ago to CORPAK, because without that, I wouldn't be here. And it's just, you're like a godfather, I would say, to the city of Rancho Cordova. You've held us in, you know, careful esteem with the rest of your district. You've helped us innumerable times. You and I have had some really challenging meetings over the years, which, at least on your end, you've dealt with very gracefully.
Likewise, you, Mr. Sander.
Thank you for that. That's very generous. But I just want to say, there's no way to thank you for the amount of time you have put in for your district. All of us, as other local elected officials, look up to you in one way or the other. At the very least, in almost the joking context, you know, of, "Well, there is a meeting going on tonight in the 5th District, so Don is probably there." You know, any kind of a meeting, whatever it is. The old joke about Don used to be that in his trunk was a bag of cold pack and a shovel, so that if a constituent called during the day and said, "There's a pothole," he could hit that on his way home after the meeting at, you know, 9:00 at night, sort of surreptitiously. So, as I said, I could go on and on, but it is a real honor to have served with you all these many years, and I wish you a very gracious retirement. And we have wonderful volunteer opportunities for you here.
I'm learning about those almost every day now, so I know my...
In your honorary home of Rancho Cordova. So thank you, Don.
Thank you, David.
All right. I'll chime in. So when I first become council, and that was Donald's fault mostly, I got appointed, and then one of the first politicians to pull me aside was Don Natoli. And he's like, "Get ready. It's going to be amazing. You're not going to know how to do anything, and everything you thought was wrong." And then he smiled and kind of walked out the room. And ever since, any of the boards or commissions that I sit on, he's always the one that pokes me and says, like, "No, that's not how we do that." And I'm like, "Yeah, but I think it should be." And he's like, "Can you calm down for a minute?" And I'm like, "Nope, nope, not even a little bit." And I just appreciate your elder statesman for younger guys that are more headstrong than smarts. And I just really appreciate you being in the room when we're fighting for Rancho Cordova, because you're usually a yes vote. So as a community member, I've always counted on you. Also, as you're the guy who fights, you has the best memes right on the way as I'm heading down to El Grove, ever, like, just the crazy tall Don. And I don't get fans like that. So I just want to appreciate what you've done.
How unfortunate.
I'll work on that, Afro or something. I really appreciate what you've done for our city. Thank you for the Mather Veterans Village. Thank you for being one of those champions. I mean, I got to claim it when we did the 15-year project, but, you know, that was you and David and Linda. Figuring out how to build in an environmentally safe way, I got to put my name on it, but that was, once again, you, David, and Linda. And, you know, since you've been here, since, I think it was before crisis, was that the date of his birth? Is that right? That was cool. So you've had a great time, like, redesigning the wheel and stuff. I'm really proud. No, but all honesty, from the city and from all my constituents, thank you so much for what you do for our city. And I cannot wait for you to come back, move to Rancho, and become another council member.
No chance of that. I'll come back to Rancho, but I... My days of politics are behind me as far as elected office. But thank you. Thanks for... Again, I didn't quite say it like that to Garrett, but nonetheless, he embellished a little bit. But he certainly... I know you've matured in your role, Garrett, and certainly have appreciated your enthusiasm. And, you know, he has that... He gives that woo-hoo every once in a while. And, you know, he's always for the city and as all of you are. And again, just much talent and much wisdom here at the DIAZ, no doubt about it.
Thanks, Don. Any other comments here? I think I see you wanted to... Go ahead.
I echo my colleagues here and what they said about you, Don. Thank you so much for your service. The memes, though, they are a big hit in Rancho Cordova. Anybody who comes to town will ask me, "Who's Don?" And I'll be like, "He's somebody who's standing up for our city." So, you know, when you have somebody want to talk about you that much, you must be doing something right. So I do aspire to be fighting for something to a level that people would want to push back and say, not this, but that. But thank you for standing up for everything that you believe in. Thank you for standing up for our city, and truly appreciate your service.
Thank you, Siri.
Yeah, I would just echo what... Don, I think you've heard from a lot of us. As the person here that got elected first to... While living in the unincorporated county, I mean, Don, you were our only elected official, right? And so I know how that feels, and I know David and Linda lived in Rancho before it was a city and, you know... But before there were those governments, we had Don, right? That's who we talked to. That's who we brought our problems to. And I just want to say thank you for the council that you've given me over the years, whether it was at the school board or at the city council. I, too, have had some of those moments, sitting in, I want to say, an American River Parkway Conservancy meeting where I think I blew it, because I started saying, "Well, we'll just, you know, get, you know, fund this, and then, you know, maybe there's some other money for soilborne." And Don had a way better idea. And if I just shut up long enough for him to talk first, then we would have had something much better. And so, you know, I've had a multitude of instances where the senior statesman really made sure that, you know... He helped us lead the right conversation at the right time. And so, you know, I've been at this for 14, 15 years. And, you know, Don was one of the first people I reached out to when I decided to run for school board and city council. So I just appreciate all your support, all your guidance, and, most importantly, all of your hard work. For those who don't know, Don and I drive relatively the same-looking car, but I'm pretty sure he's got about 200,000 more miles on his than I do. But we bought them at about the same time. But we bought them at about the same time. They're, they're relatively the same car, except he has driven the heck out of his comparatively to mine. And that's just a testament to the, the work that you do. And, you know, even through pandemics and everything else, like, you don't have to look far to see Donatoli at a community meeting, listening to people. And that, you just don't see that in the same way anymore. And so, again, thank you for all your service. And we're lucky to have gotten you for this long and good luck in retirement. With that, Cyrus, I see you just turned your camera on. Did you want to say anything?
Sure. I, I wanted to also make a quick comment. I had the pleasure and honor of meeting Don over thirty years ago. And when, in my former life, I worked very directly with him. And watching Don in action is, and his level of dedication and commitment to the community, the hard work that he does for the community is remarkable. Definitely somebody that I have aspired to become like, and I, somebody that has always been a role model for us. And I can also tell you, you know, ever since I moved into this role and in, with the city of Rancho Cordova, Don was always available for phone calls. Don was always available for advice. Don always gave, gave us support. We, every time we needed a letter of support from, for fun, for grants or any type of projects, Don was the first one that we could go to. So I, you would be sorely missed, Don. You, your public service, as been mentioned before, it's something that's exemplary and not very difficult to find in many examples of it. So thank you. Thank you for all you've done for us.
Thank you, Cyrus.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move on to twelve, whoops, sorry about that. Right off my screen. We're on to twelve point three, but, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Terry. Try to, might want to change the locks, though. Just gets into.
Might be one of those examples. Oh, we're gonna take some pictures. All right. Go ahead. Well, just stand at the back there.
Well, somebody should hold his resolution too. Go ahead.
Not next to him.
Bring it in. Just one final thing. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge certainly all the good support I've had over the years. Most recently with Rebecca Sloan, but certainly Jane Smith and Pat Brazil, Cheryl Benegas over the years, again, who've had to follow me around and try to keep, keep up and with all the requests. But again, tremendous staff support that I've had, both secretaries and assistants and chiefs of staff. And so I, again, I applaud them and thank them so much for all their help, too. They've served you as well. So again, thank you so much for all the recognition.
Don, Don, before you leave, we are gonna sing happy birthday to Garrett. And then we do have refreshments. We were gonna break right after, right after Garrett's birthday.
Okay.
And so I believe there are cookies or cupcakes or something in the hallway that are, aren't just for Garrett. They're for you too, Don.
No, they're not.
So that, normally, we would, normally, we have Garrett lead us in song. But since it's Garrett's birthday, I guess I have to ask David to do it. I don't know why, but I'm gonna ask David.
Just settle for me. Okay.
That's right.
All right, very good. Are we ready? And a one, and a two. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Garrett. Happy birthday, happy birthday to you.
He turned twenty-one today. Now we can have a beer.
Twenty-one. So young. Thank you, everybody. I'm very excited. This will be, I have no idea what birthday. I've lost count now. But I heard that age comes with wisdom, so I am that much smarter. All right, cupcake time?
Yeah. So with that, we'll take a ten-minute recess, colleagues. We'll be back in, let's say, six twenty-five. Close enough? That work? See y'all then. ... featured at the bottom center of your screen, or if you're in an Apple product like I am, it's in the top right. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine now to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom and telephone, please wait to be called upon by the city clerk. For items on the agenda, speakers will be called, will be called by them there at the point on the agenda and will be heard. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments to three minutes or less and state the name and community of residence. Under the provisions of the California Government Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item not on the agenda unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after the posting of the agenda. I'll ask the city clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We'll start with James Garcia. Following James will be Josh Grover. And we'll start with that. James, you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm James Garcia. I am a member of Stone Creek neighborhood. And I just wanted to kind of talk this time about my public records request process that took place recently. I requested information on the developer agreement and all of the annual review processes that took place for the area that was governing the Zimfandel Special Planning Area. Took a little while to get that. I understand it's a big request. However, it was, kind of took to the longest stretch of time that was allowed. Had a comment to request a fourteen-day extension per the code, which is understandable of the nature of that request. But then, when it was, I followed up on it after the fourteen days, it indicated that there was a different date. So there was a different date from when that initial email came back to me to when they were trying to state that they had fourteen days from. So a little off on that, a little upset. But the biggest part is that there's an annual review process that was supposed to be put forth in all of the developer agreements that were in place by the county at the time, because again, this was prior to us becoming a city. There was only one record that was submitted back to me for that and a review. And it was dated in two thousand fourteen. And it stated that things were lost in transit from becoming a county to a city. And that process was kind of neglected, in my opinion. Hasn't, there's no more. I asked for all other records. The planning department was, did not provide that, I guess, to the clerk, because the clerk stated I'm at the planning department. And I'll forward that request on the planning department. So just kind of feel that that request was not met and still is not met. And it's not being followed. So kind of think that developer agreement should be kind of null and void at this point in time with the fact that it was not being followed properly. So if that's how that developer agreement is, how about all the other developer agreements? How are they done? Just look at your process and actually follow it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Josh Grover. Josh, you'll have up to three minutes.
Hello, I'm Josh Grover. I live in Rancho Cordova on Georgetown Drive in Ellison. I'm the head cross-country coach at Cordova High School, executive director of the Rancho Cordova Track Club, and alumni of Cordova High School as well. We just hosted an event this past weekend that Siri participated in showing up at, and another city staff member, Lindsay Samples. We hosted the Hoka Postal Nationals. It's a world brand. They host an event called Hoka Postal Nationals that is all over the country. And it's basically a two-mile track race that happens, like I said, a series of high schools. It's a high school event. And basically, what happens is you race in order to get onto a leaderboard. And we've been thankful, this is our second year hosting the event. Our entries started at, I believe, a hundred and fifty last year, and we reached to three hundred and seventy athletes served this past weekend. It was an incredible event. Pretty much our entire Cordova cross-country team PR'd. They ran personal records, got a bunch of swag for the group. Assistant coaches were also in attendance and got a bunch of swag as well. So the kids were very excited about it. They don't stop talking about the event. They talk about that event more than they talk about our league championship win that took place last season. So, you know, having a, a national shoe brand, and it was live broadcasted by Runner Space as well. So there's some videos up online of some of the top-tier races. A lot of the schools that were in attendance were Division Two and Division One teams, as well as, you know, Hyrum Johnson, River City. Jesuit was involved. St. Francis was involved as well. So we're bringing some high-caliber competition to Rancho Cordova so that our student athletes can, you know, progress. Our current team right now is at thirty-five kids. So we're getting back to our numbers like we had in two thousand nineteen. So we're very excited about that. These student athletes carry some of the highest GPAs on our campus, ranging from three-point-oh to four-point-twos. They're involved in multiple clubs, you know. So for them to race on the weekends is just kind of the cherry on top. So we're really excited about that. This was actually the first event that took place on the resurfaced track. So I would like to thank the city, the community members, everybody that's involved, the Folsom Cordova Unified School District. They made it possible for that of our track to be resurfaced. It's incredible. It's fast. Times were just going nuts this weekend. So we look forward to finishing our cross-country season. We got a couple meets coming up until league finals, which we're gonna make a push for both teams to place really high in league, bring another league title back for the boys, take a good second-place charge for the ladies, and then make a big push for sections. So we're really excited for it. And then obviously, continue it into the track club. So thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Next speaker, please.
The city clerk's office does not have any other speaker cards from those in the council chambers. The city clerk's office did receive two public comments via email. One is from Margot Baxter. The second is from Marilyn Metzger. Those have been distributed to the city council, printed for the public in the back of the council chambers and are also available on the city's website.
Thank you, Stacy. And I'm still not seeing any hands raised in Zoom. I'll give that another five seconds before we move on. Okay, not seeing any more. We will move on to council reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Greenwood.
So, a lot of stuff going on. If you haven't noticed, there's an election. So it's amazing. I got to, I got in the two-by-two for fire, Metro Fire, but I wasn't able to actually talk because I guess that guy can't figure out technology. I'm not gonna get insulted by that. But good job running the meeting, Linda. And then.
The chief runs the meeting.
Well, yes, the chief runs the meeting. So the other thing is that I got to spend some time at Dave Roppers Fields. Rancho Cordova is actually blowing up when it comes to soccer and some of the sports. We seem to be getting bigger, but we need a lot of help with coaches. And I'm hoping that next year, we can do something on this council that will help us to miss out, since we had over four hundred kids in Rancho Cordova, not get to play soccer in our city. So our next step needs to be focusing on these other sports. Besides that, I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Garrett. With that, next up is Councilmember Pula Patti.
Thank you, Mayor. Busy season for two of our elected officials, but really busy season for all of us. It's a combination of the festivities, film releases, a lot of shows. So I attended the documentary on Rancho Cordova, which was a collaboration of the city of Rancho Cordova and the Nimbus Films. It premiered at MAC, and it talked about Rancho Cordova as a city. We'd had, starred two of our elected officials in the film. And it had our vice mayor, Linda, and council member David, who talked about the history of the city. And it was titled From the Gold Rush to Space Race. And I think it was pretty apt. It was a packed house, and a lot of people with a history in the city showed up to view it. And I think I was one of the newest people in there. I learned a lot from the film. You should go watch it. Of course, I attended the Hoka Postal Race. It was a really well-attended event. Kudos to Josh. And I saw that a lot of the work was being done by the students. So they actually kind of did staff the boot. They did a lot of running around, not just running around on the race, but also, you know, to manage the event. So really, it was, I think it was a team effort. So go team. And I think with Vice Mayor Linda, we attended the Sudan Art and Cultural Show over the weekend. It was pretty festive. They showcased, you know, how a marriage is done. They had their regional dances, wonderful food. So it was really good to learn more about their culture and see how, how they are with respect to ours. And they were really close to the Indian culture, too. They had their nice bright colors, too, which I was not intimidated. I have to see how Vice Mayor thought about all the bright colors around here. But it was a pretty fun event that we attended. And yeah, that's my report for this week.
Thank you very much. With that, David, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had an eventful couple of weeks. I was asked to speak to the Montana, Montana League of Cities and Towns about ten, two weeks ago, and had a great trip through Montana getting there. Along the way, I found Wisdom. Literally the town of wisdom. I suppose I should have the slide here, but that would degenerate into a slideshow. But just imagine, you know, welcome to Wisdom, with me standing in front of the sign. It was pretty interesting. I'll share the photo if anybody wants to see that. But in, in many ways, you know, adventures like that do lead us to, to Wisdom. Not far down the road, now this is in Montana, not far down the road after Wisdom, I saw a sign by the side of the road. And it had a big Montana flag on this sign. And you can imagine, there's like mountains in the background, and there's plains there and cattle, and just a beautiful scene. Here's this back of the billboard with a sign, big Montana flag. And it says, "Don't California My Montana," around the Montana flag. So I saw that. And then a couple, a day later, I had to address the Montana League. And having had a day to reflect on that and having, you know, found Wisdom, I told them, you know, I really appreciate the intent behind that, behind that sign. And I'm not here to California your Montana. And I said, as a matter of fact, based on the wisdom I've seen here, what we need to do is Montana my California. And I know a lot of people agree with me on some of those sentiments. But it was a really interesting trip. I would just say that from the issues that we experience here in the city of Rancho Cordova in California, if you compare those to little towns and medium-sized cities all over Montana, they're very, very similar. We have such similar issues, regardless of the size and location of our city. Now, of course, there's some things that can be different. We don't worry so much about, you know, cattle grazing rights or, or things like that that they might run into. But it's always refreshing to go to an audience like that and talk with people in a very different scenario and get insights into your own problems back home because of what they're dealing with. So I had a, I had a great time in Montana. And I proceeded from Montana to Amsterdam. And that is an odd transition, isn't it, from Montana to Amsterdam in the Netherlands?
Just the layovers sound fun.
What's that?
I said, just the layovers sound fun and interesting to go from Montana to Amsterdam. There's gotta be some interesting random airports you gotta get through to get there.
That's right. Yeah, I flew from Kalispell, which is near Glacier National Park, not, not a big airport, but getting bigger because of tourism. But I was at City Lab, which is, that conference has probably been going on for, I don't know, seven or eight years. We, we get emails.
I did City Lab in Dallas in two thousand fourteen.
There we go. So, yeah, Linda's been before. It is a remarkable event. And I was sponsored there by the Aspen Institute. They paid my way and, and my expenses. They partnered with Bloomberg in putting it on. And I was there representing Rancho Cordova, because we're an innovative place, and also representing my role at the, at the National League of Cities. And it's not a normal meeting. A normal city meeting is you go to somewhere and you pay attention to all the transportation sessions or the economic development sessions or something like that. That's not how this one works. This one throws a whole bunch of ideas at you as city leaders, and they just want you to think in an innovative way. And I can say, you know, as someone who's done this now for, for decades, tried to come up with great ideas for, for city leadership and improve my city, this was really inspiring in a way that I frankly didn't expect it to be. I got to participate in a little small discussion on service delivery. I talked about growing strong neighborhoods in Rancho Cordova. My counterpart there was sort of an Israeli program that basically had growing strong neighborhoods identical to us in different language. Actually pulled my phone out in the middle of it, hit record, just like making a video, put it down just to record what they were saying, because it was so close to, to what we do. So I'm just gonna share with you, I'm gonna do a mini City Lab and just share with you a couple of ideas I heard at that meeting that hopefully might make you think. If you know the story of a place, you automatically respect it. We just heard about a documentary, right? About our history. If you know the story of a place, you automatically respect it. If you don't, you may not respect it. Residents in leafy, bird-filled places are more mentally resilient and healthy than urban dwellers without that. So birds and leaves matter. The sense of personal safety is even more important than the birds and leaves. We probably knew that. A Chicago planner, after Chicago's great fires, Chicago planner said, "Don't make small plans. Creating order is our highest calling." So basically, think big. Bloomberg uh showed us a project where cities were painting large swaths of asphalt. So this might be difficult to understand without a visual, but imagine one of these giant intersections. You know, we build these two big intersections in California where it's like six lanes by six lines crossing, you got an acre of pavement in the middle. Imagine if that was painted around the edge so it looked like there was a forest there. You still have the lanes that show you where to drive, but it looks like a forest on the asphalt. Anne Frank, Amsterdam is home to to where Anne Frank lived, and of course, she was a victim of the Holocaust. Share her quote, "How wonderful is it that no one must wait a single moment to act to improve the world?" How wonderful is it that no one must wait a single moment to act to improve the world? And then finally, this is probably reflective, uh Jim, of something later on our agenda here. "It can be incredibly seductive to talk about the potential of new technology, but you must pay more attention to its current abilities and drawbacks. Don't be blinded by the potential." All right, so that's your mini City Lab. And Josh, I want to thank you for coming, talking about that event. I talk about those quite often from this podium because I view that as such a great way to help engage our kids at Cordova and throughout the city at all different, all different levels, all different areas of our city, the potential they have through uh through youth sports. So thank you for being a leader in that. We really appreciate your your efforts. All right, that's my report.
Thanks, sir. Linda, you're up.
Okay. Uh, actually, I shared a version of that street painting with Albert a couple of weeks ago, and um it's it's a really, a really cool way to add a completely different dynamic to to roads and streets. So, yeah, Garrett's right. We did the um the Metro Fire two-by-two, and um uh we have a new um, um. Lisa, what are you? Uh, fi- fire marshal, thank you. All I could think of was fire chief, yeah, fire marshal. You too, me too. Uh, statistics are great for Rancho Cordova, actually, uh in terms of um the huge amount of land that Metro Fire uh has responsibility for here in Sacramento County. We attended the the fifth birthday of the MAC, Mill Station Arts and Culture Center, for those of you who are not from Rancho Cordova. Absolutely amazing to to uh be confronted with the fact that it has been five years since that building has been opened and thinking about all of the different events from Taipagami to the Anne Frank exhibit, to the hats, to the, if you haven't seen it, ladies and gentlemen, I'll bet you can't imagine somebody doing artwork on the interior of an Oreo cookie. And um it's worth a trip to go and see. Rancho Cordova joined the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce after following that that incredible uh anniversary celebration that Maria and I attended, and we're very pleased to be a participating member. The history film was an absolute hoot because it was almost as though everybody in that room knew each other, and Josh would have known people, um, because so many people there were Cordova grads going back to the sixties and seventies and coming all the way up to today. So many people, uh, people were asked to raise their hands about how long they had lived in Rancho Cordova. Just absolutely wonderful event, and it's gonna be shown again, uh, for those who would like to see it, Thursday night, this coming Thursday night, again at the MAC at six-thirty in the evening. Um, it takes about, it, the, the film itself is not two hours, but the, uh, but planned to be there for two hours. Siri and I did attend the uh festival but put on by people from Sudan. It turns out, one of our wonderful engineers here in Rancho Cordova at the city is from Sudan, and she invited us, and it was just fascinating. Siri is, David just right, um, if you, if you know the story of a place, you will respect it. I went to Wikipedia and looked up Sudan and found out so much information. It turns out that it, in terms of landmass, it is the largest country in, single country in Africa. It's sort of between Egypt on the north and the area with Somalia on the south. Its capital is Khartoum, which made me think of a very old Charlton Heston movie from the sixties, but um uh similar to India. Many, many languages are spoken in Sudan. Uh, there are many different peoples. It has been ruled by many different empires in the past. It's an absolutely fascinating, has fascinating history, and um it was really nice to be there and be able to see all of their different traditions and um, and their similarity to, similarity to traditions from others, other countries that we are aware of. And then finally, whatever, want to let everybody know, um, let all the third graders know that this is the season when the Rancho Cordova Rotary comes and distributes dictionaries to all of the third-grade kids in Rancho Cordova with, um, all third-grade kids in Rancho Cordova will receive a dictionary from Rotary, um, courtesy of the publisher. And I will be doing navigator with the, um, on Thursday morning with the lady who is the new executive director at the Cordova Food Locker. And so all of your little kids should look forward to getting their dictionary. It's kind of like an early Christmas present, and I will be showing the little kids how to make a book cover for their dictionary so that they can keep it, uh, keep it nice and handsome. Thank you, Donald.
Thank you. I think I, I need to refresh her on how to make a book cover. I haven't done that in a while. I'll keep mine fairly brief. Air district doesn't meet until next week. I, along with one of our staff members, did attend the Metro Chamber Study Mission last week to San Diego. Uh, it was nice. It was the first time in, I believe, three and a half, four years that, since we, since we've had that trip, it was actually supposed to be in Kansas City, which, um, for any of you that missed that trip, I believe, uh, National League of Cities is gonna be in the same place if anybody is tinkering for barbecue and wanted to go experience parts of Kansas City. But city was very interesting. Um, I I did have a handful of other meetings during that time, and so I didn't get to everything that I was hoping to get to, but there was a lot of conversations around adaptive reuse of commercial spaces into residential. There are some very unique things going on in downtown San Diego as far as zoning and who has authority over certain things. Their their port authority is a fascinating beast of a land use authority that governs the first couple of blocks of waterfront in San Diego, which is one of the reasons you don't see any, any residential within that district. Um, and they have some massive life science uh developments and master plans under, under, um, underway at the moment, some things that I think i- in this city or or in this region would probably be phased in over five years. They're building it all simultaneously. So there's some really interesting things that that were happening. We did have an STA meeting last week. The only thing that I would, I would share with the body is, uh, uh, we were competing, though our White Rock Road project was competing with um the Hazel RT expansion, um, off-ramp there, and for the most part, because there's a lot of votes from the county and other jurisdictions, including Folsom, uh, White Rock came in second out of, out of the two uh for that one, unfortunately. Uh, but that doesn't mean that we're not gonna get funding. It just, it means we're not, we're not ranked as the number one ask that we're gonna have. And for the size of the, for the size of the Hazel project, it'll probably eat up whatever, whatever amount in this region we, we get from the allocation that, I wanna say, and Albert can probably remind me, I wanna say it was a state-funded allocation that we were going after, Department of Transportation. I attended the ALF dinner along with uh the city manager and Councilmember Gatewood. I would encourage the rest of my colleagues, if you're interested in someday participating in the ALF, uh, I believe nominations are right around the corner, and there are a few of us that have been through it before, including myself and Garrett and Cyrus, that um, if anyone is interested in doing that, feel free to seek us out and have some more conversations. And then finally, um, I attended on behalf of the city, the Sacramento County Homeless Council, um, that I'm, the city's representative for. I believe this was our fourth meeting that we've had. Um, I would say it, it was probably one of the more productive ones. We, we got a little bit in the weeds as far as um service-oriented things and how we're, how we're dealing with coordinated entry across the county and trying to come up with one agreed to list so that if there's a homeless person in Rancho Cordova that's seeking services and and housing, that they have access to whichever the next available housing unit is, regardless of where it is within the county. Um, and then vice versa, that would mean that our housing units here in this city would be available to whoever it is that it's deemed to be the highest need. And that, that's taken some time to, for us to get to, but um hopefully that will improve our, our outcomes for homeless people and and hopefully houses that we all can agree are the ones with the highest need, um, outside of the specialized projects like Mather Veterans Village and certain other places where it's very specific who, who can have access to those units. I think that's probably it for me, so with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for anything he'd like to share.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very brief. Uh, just wanted to mention the uh, uh, many of the events that have been mentioned I also was able to attend, but the one event, the, the fifth-year anniversary of MAC, as I was thinking about the journey that this building has taken and the work that we did uh five, six years ago to work with regional transit and transform that into an art and culture center is remarkable. And if you have not seen it, as Vice Mayor Budge mentioned, it's really a treat, you know, just to watch some of the art exhibits that they have. I wanted to specifically acknowledge the great work of Cordova Community Council and specifically Cheryl Gleeson, uh, for the work that she has done to attract and bring some very, very high caliber art shows to the space. In fact, uh, you know, one of the upcoming events uh is going to be from Spitzonian, so uh something not to be missed. Just wanted to make sure that uh it's on everybody's radar that they have great, great shows coming up. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much. With that, we'll move on to item sixteen, Consent Calendar Items. Consent Calendar Items consist of matters deemed routine and controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Let me start by asking, do we have any public comment on the calendar?
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment for items on the consent calendar, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
We'll just give it another couple seconds for Zoom in case anybody wants to change their mind and raise their hand. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to my colleagues. Anything to be pulled from the calendar?
Seeing none, I'll move approval of items sixteen-point-one through sixteen-point-ten.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. Calendar is agreed to. Moving on to consent public hearing items. Consent public hearing items uh consist of matters deemed routine and cont- and non-controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items will be approved by one motion. Uh, let me start by opening the public hearing and asking if we have any public comments on the calendar.
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment for items on the consent public hearing calendar, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Nor do I. Uh, colleagues, any item that needs to be pulled for individual consideration or discussion?
Seeing none, I move approval of items seventeen-point-one and seventeen-point-two.
Second.
Okay, uh, I have a motion by Budge, a second by Pulapati. I'll close the roll, uh, I'll close the public hearing and ask for a roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulapati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Budge?
Yes.
Mayor Terry?
Aye. Calendar is agreed to. We're, we have no public hearing items tonight. We'll move on to regular calendar items, and our first regular calendar item will be nineteen-point-one, Smart City Rancho Cordova Presentation, and we're turning this over to Kim Duran, I believe. There she is.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Kim Duran, Carre Georgio Administrative Services Director, and I am very excited to be here this evening uh on this item. Uh, if you might recall, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, the city engaged Medafer Enterprises to come and speak with the council and conducted a workshop on uh what it would take to become a smart city and begin the journey of developing a strategic roadmap. And uh unfortunately, COVID kind of uh took our, took our attention elsewhere for a short time, but we are back on track and excited to begin moving forward on this initiative again. So this evening, uh, we have Medafer uh Enterprises here to provide an overview of what it means to be a smart city and engage the council on uh some of your thoughts on what you would like to see incorporated into this roadmap. So with that, I'll turn it over to Jim Medafer.
Thank you very much, Kim, and uh good evening, uh, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. It is an honor to be back before you. As Kim mentioned, our firm helps cities by creating strategic roadmaps uh to become and frankly, in your case, to enhance what I believe is already your existing smart city efforts. Uh, I'm a former San Diego City Councilmember, speaking of San Diego, uh, where I served two full terms. Uh, I'm also past president to the League of California Cities, uh, so very proud of uh Councilmember Sander and his role uh at the National League. And I also served for many years on the California State Transportation Commission. It is our honor to be here tonight. You'll hear some, from some members of our team, uh, but most importantly, we want to hear from you tonight. Uh, as Kim mentioned, we had a workshop uh back in two thousand nineteen here at the city, uh, and as she said, COVID did get in the way, uh, but I'm very proud of so much what your city has already done. Uh, you are clearly leaders in the region in so many areas, members of the council with your own subject matter expertise, along with the city manager and the staff. You guys have just done a wonderful job. Clearly, your leadership role, uh, Councilmember Sanders, is not only gonna keep enhancing the city of Rancho Cordova, but because they'll be moving up the, the chairs at the National League of Cities, will only heighten the awareness that the rest of the country has on what Rancho Cordova is doing. Um, your Fiber City effort and the Smart City work that you've already done, the deal that you did earlier this year uh with Fiber, uh, is a tremendous thing, and it's gonna be a huge economic driver. This really gets down to not only just for the city, but frankly, for the Sacramento region. Uh, it's gonna enhance business development, as you've already seen with companies coming here, and it's also, most importantly, gonna help bridge the digital divide for all residents. I love the line, uh, birds and leaves, uh, and you know what? Technology is, along with it, is something all our residents in the businesses can benefit from, so never be blinded by the potential of technology, and so much of what you've already done is evident to that. Uh, with that, I want to introduce Kyle Alderman uh from our team, who will then introduce Jeremy Ogul following that, and thanks again for the opportunity to be here. Kyle?
Thank you, everyone. Happy to be here. Um, you'll see here, this is just a brief overview of our team. Tonight, we have, as you heard from, Jim Medafer, along with our president, Robin Medafer, and myself, Kyle, and Jeremy Ogul. So we like to start off with this image here as it's a great representation of how smart cities came to be. So this is actually a photo from a marketing campaign from IB, uh, excuse me, IBM, um, where they actually used the term smart city as a sort of marketing tool to market their new and emerging technologies towards the end of the Great Recession. But over the last ten to fifteen years, cities have taken the idea of a smart city and really used it to create their own idea of what it means to be a smart city. So while there's many different ways to define what that means, uh, this definition comes from the International Telecommunications Union, which is a branch of the UN. They define a smart and connected city as an innovative city that uses information and communication technologies and other means to improve the quality of life, efficiency of urban operation and services, and competitiveness, while ensuring that it meets the needs of present and future generations with respect to economic, social, and environmental aspects. Now, while this is a great- Now, while this is a great, broad definition and sort of sets the tone of what a smart city is, each city creates their own unique and dynamic definition that works for them. And with that, I'll switch it over to Jeremy Ogle.
Thank you. Good evening. So on the screen and on this slide, we've shared a couple definitions that we gathered from different groups, one of which is the Smart City Council, one of which is from the city of Chula Vista, and one from the city of West Hollywood. One thing that you'll notice, and there's a pattern here with each of these definitions. First, each of them refers to technology, whether that's information and communication technology, technology and advanced data analytics tools, technology and data. So these are the tools. This is the instrument by which cities are reaching for their goals. The second piece of each of these definitions is the things that are important to that city. And that differs from city to city. For some cities, public safety is something that citizens are really concerned about. Some cities, economic development is something that's their priority when they're looking at smart cities. In this case, the city of West Hollywood was very focused on the customer experience. As customers and citizens engaged with the city, how are they experiencing their interactions with the city? So the point of sharing this with you is that we want to go through this exercise and create our own definition here in Rancho Cordova. So through our conversations with city staff, through our conversations with you tonight, through our conversations with important stakeholders in the community, including the Chamber of Commerce, who we're working on setting a meeting with very soon, speaking with their executive on Wednesday. We want to define this for Rancho Cordova. What are those goals that we're working toward? And I wanted to actually also respond to Councilmember Sanders' point, the quote that he brought back from that awesome conference in Amsterdam, which is "technology doesn't necessarily solve every problem." And sometimes it can, it can create new problems that you weren't expecting. So that's part of the reason we're creating this roadmap is to identify what is the technology that's valuable to us and what are the goals that we're trying to achieve? That way, when a vendor comes to the city and says, hey, I've got this great new software platform, I've got this great new camera sensor, you have a roadmap that you can point to and say, where is this on our priority? You know, we've established our priorities as a city, and that's, sounds like a great tool, but it doesn't line up with what's important to us. So I shared some definitions with you. We shared a smart city. I also wanted to share these definitions that come from our partner and friends at MoHuman as a nonprofit organization focused on digital inclusion. And these definitions are important because they're likely to come up as part of this strategic roadmap for Rancho Cordova. The concept of digital equity, the digital divide, digital inclusion have really come to the foreground in the past couple of years with COVID-19 and the way that we've adapted to gathering and communicating. Digital equity is the end goal. It's the state that we want to be in, where it doesn't matter what neighborhood you live in, your income level, the size of your family, you have the same access and the same ability to interact with and benefit from what the city is doing. The digital divide is the state that we're in now. The gap between haves and have-nots, those who have access to the internet and those who don't. And I would also add, those who have the ability or the interest in using these tools and those who don't. Digital inclusion are the activities, the steps that we engage in to bridge that gap and get to that end state of digital equity. And finally, citizen engagement. I know this is really important to Rancho Cordova, and you have kind of a model actually of how to engage the community in a really unique way. It's been a pleasure learning about that from the city staff here. So that leads us to the strategic roadmap model. This is an approach that a number of cities have taken. We've got a list of a few of them. I know there are many more. But really, the purpose is to have a high-level picture of where are we now? What are the recent investments that we've made in terms of technology today? Where do we want to go? And what are the challenges that we have to overcome to get there? What are the policies that we need to put in place? How do we prioritize the many things that we want to do in a way that's realistic, in a way that each step supports the next step in the process, rather than just kind of a random smattering of whoever shows up and tries to sell you something as the next, you know, the next purchase? So these are the questions that we're trying to answer through this process. And ultimately, the end product will give you a nice picture. To show you some examples from some of these cities that I mentioned on the previous slide, this is an example excerpt, I guess, from the city of Saratoga Springs, New York. We like this example because it clearly identifies some short-term actions and also some long-term actions. There's going to be some low-hanging fruit, and there's going to be things that are going to require many years of planning, many years of, you know, financial investment. And also there, you know, you can see that they've very clearly identified who's responsible for each of these goals. This is an excerpt from the city of West Hollywood. And what's nice about this is the way that they've laid out and identified that there are pieces that are programs, there are pieces that are technology, but there are also pieces that are policy and things that are not a gadget or a device, but are just as important to delivering the goals that have been identified as part of your smart city definition. And they've also clearly identified where the, where these initiatives intersect, where one initiative is dependent on getting another initiative done first. Another excerpt, this is from the city of Chula Vista, again, showing performance indicators and outcomes, being very clear about how are we going to measure whether we're being successful or not. And then another excerpt, again, from the city of West Hollywood. What we liked about this example is the way you kind of can visually see where each of these investments, each of these policies fits on a timeline. And finally, an excerpt from a recent document from the city of Orlando. They just released their Future Ready, Future Ready City Master Plan. So kind of a different spin, rather than smart city, they use the term "future-ready city." It's something we could do here, if you like that idea. And again, they've kind of, they've broken down their goals and their initiatives into these different categories. So in the strategic roadmap that we are building for the city of Rancho Cordova, we're going to talk about, as I mentioned, policies. We're going to talk about some of the risks that come along with some of these technologies, the risks of things of, you know, different platforms not talking to each other, or data not being portable. We're going to talk about community engagement. We're going to look at cost and some of the budget issues and funding issues that go along with some of the ideas, as well as partnership opportunities and metrics for success. All of this is informed and intended to align with the plans, master plans, general plans that you already have as a city. You've already done a lot of work in terms of setting your goals, in terms of planning within the context of specific departments. That ITS master plan is a really important one that connects Rancho Cordova to the region's technology, transportation, technology, infrastructure. So we want to make sure that what we come up with is complementary and builds off of these plans that you have in place already. A quick overview of the timeline. We kicked this project off in August. We're working on our first draft now. We've spent many hours interviewing city departments and different city staff, learning about how the city does business and what's important, what are the gaps and opportunities. And our goal is, after a couple iterations of drafts, we'll be back here to share with you the final product at some point in February of next year. So that leads us to the conversation tonight. These are the questions that we want to ask you and get your thoughts on. And if I'll, I'll turn it over to Jim to give some closing remarks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Well, just as Jeremy said, I mean, these are the questions before us tonight. And we really would love to hear from each of you as elected officials in representing your constituency. You recognize the issues from economic development, but as you saw, the digital divide, and what can we do to really fit into these things and find the problems that we're willing to solve? And what strategies? And the beauty about this council is that so many of you have a background or an interest in technology. You understand it, which is why you do so well as a city. And so we're more than happy to stop there. And Mr. Mayor, however you want to handle each of the members to get their thoughts, we're taking lots of notes. And as Jeremy said, we'll be coming back, working with city staff as we refine this moving forward. And what we bring to you will be a draft in our next iteration. Obviously, it's the city that ultimately approves it. I'll just go back one slide, a couple slides. At top one, for example, the general plan. You know, it's very interesting, knowing local government as we do around the state of California. General plans are such an important document. And the question you want to ask yourself is, where do we have anything that fits or talks about smart city or connected communities or future cities in our general plan? And my guess is, you don't. And that's one of the areas you'll see in our recommendation, I can just tell you right off the bat, would be a great one. So when somebody pulls a building permit or when somebody's doing something, are we making sure that the construction, that project, fits, as Jeremy was describing, the vision that you, as the leaders of this city, that you, as you've heard from your business leaders and your residents, have talked about? And that is such an important document, and everything kind of goes from there as to all the other contracts. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I will turn it back.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, and I, if only we were the only zoning body that was ever at Rancho Cordova, I think things would have been a lot easier too in fitting into our general plan. But with that, can we first start with, do we have any public comment for this item?
Yes, we do. I'm going to go ahead and call James Garcia. James, you'll have up to three minutes.
Hi, I'm James Garcia from Stone Creek. My comment on this is, I love technology, so just kudos for putting this out there, having another company come forward to try to help guide us as a city is great. So that's one, one great aspect of it. But as you kind of know, what is community saying? He was just kind of referencing to that. We are really wanting to prioritize residential needs over developers. We want to have clean air. We want to have mega, we don't want mega warehouses next to residential. We want a preservation of wildlife in the river. We want all of that type of functionality. We love the idea of building permits to being accurate, accurate websites. Where you can get the proper information and not have it relayed back to you that, oh, that's inaccurate, and then it's taken down. We want it done right the first time. Because technology, you have to vet it out first. You have to put it out there, have it in a beta test zone, as opposed to it's live, it's prime time, and then now you renege on it. We don't want that. So think about it. It needs to be complete. And allow for great, will this also give us a better opportunity for public hearings? Because we have Zoom right now, but are we going to be able to use this smart city roadmap for public hearings for lots of projects that are on the table going forward? Because again, as you bring forth that fiber to the whole entire city, that means the city now can finally be involved, a little more so than they have before. The opportunity is there, so they can actually use their voice. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's the last speaker that we have on this item. I'm looking to Zoom to see if there's any hands, but I don't see any.
Nor do I. I will bring it, let's bring back to our colleagues here. Any feedback for staff on the questions that you see in front of you?
Siri, you going first? Okay.
Well, let me ask a pedestrian question.
Okay.
Just, I mean, you guys can take it away, but let me ask just a basic planner-type question. So Jim, if I understand you correctly, I mean, obviously, the state of California has a huge laundry list of mandatory and discretionary elements that could be in the general plan. And so you're proposing that we should add a smart city element to the general plan?
Yeah, it gets down to really, are we making sure that when somebody comes along to do something in the city that you have authority over? Does it fit with the roadmap that you're adopting? And it's almost a checkbox. So whether it's in the development side, whether, whatever function within the city, and every city's different, and that's why you're a city, is because you wanted to have that local control.
Well, and, you know, from my perspective, this is a really great time to do that because Cyrus and his team have worked so hard over the last three years to make sure that our technology has evolved and provides a lot of the capabilities that that we want to be sure people have, you know, the ability to submit things online and get permits online and, you know, even down to, even down to doing your animal licensing online, you know, just a whole host of things. So in our case, a smart city element would really support his efforts and make sure that that can all be updated as time goes on and there are new versions of whatnot released.
You're absolutely right. And that's, that's the whole idea of creating this roadmap. And as, as you heard Jeremy speak, so often, whether it's not necessarily council members, you get hit all the time, certainly the city manager and his staff does, to buy the latest shiny object. And so-
For a lot of money.
And what we want to try to do is, this is how you save taxpayer money too, because you want to make sure that it fits with what your overall master plan is all about. And I realize it changes. Technology, you know, let's face it, what has it been? Not even 15 years since the iPhone came out where you could actually touch a screen. I mean, before that, it was flip phones. That wasn't that long ago. Technology is advancing so rapidly.
Yeah, but now they went back to flip phones.
Yes, that's true.
Whatever.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, that's it for me.
All right, I'll go.
Go ahead.
As one of the two tech nerds in the group. So how do I define a smart city? A smart city has the ability to use data throughout its community to solve problems, which means having the high-speed internet ran throughout the community means that we're able to capture data, then bring it into a localized solution, and then use actual data to solve problems. So if we were having problems with, let's say, crime in a community, we could then gather the data quickly. Maybe we could see the red light cameras. Maybe we could pull data on crime statistics. Maybe we could pull speeders and all this stuff into one group and then be able to analyze it and statistically come up with answers, which means we're not just doing gut raw motion. We're actually having data to back up our solutions. That's what a day, a smart city means to me. And when we went through, because I was the nerd that basically wanted you guys, because I came back from a thing, and I'm like, we're a smart city. I want to be a smart city. Want to know what a smart city means, because there's about a hundred billion definitions of what a smart city is. And I don't think it's just data capture. I think more it's data analysis that really makes a smart city. The biggest problems, besides some of the amazing stuff that our other IT nerd in the building just said, I think our big, one of our biggest issues is the cost of ISPs and data and the control. Because right now, the city is pulling fiber to every location, and that's just amazing. But what the next steps would be is data center, colos, and how does that work in the community? It'll be a big stretch, but it's like owning, I think, I went on this trip and I saw this city, and it was in Texas, and David was with me. And they had gotten their own power company. So they had their own utility. And what that allowed them to do was, when business or economic development came into the region, they were able to look at it, understand it, and be able to offer power or certain things that would give them a boost, an extra step that would make their city oppressive. They had no, they had no debt because they owned their own power, and then they sold their power off to other communities. With all these amazing businesses, large size, I mean, that just, I mean, it's the tech companies that are trying to flood in here to take advantage. I think the next step for us is how does Rancho Cordova as a city control the data throughout? How do we become the ISP that steps in? What's the next step? What do we, because what, what internet is, has now become a utility. And because we have a fiber city, we can now, as a city, actually own the utility itself. So we could be the ones that bring in, like, a giant company like Solidine and say, hey, you know what? Since you came here, let's do something about the internet, because internet is the lifeblood. Oh, we have lower disadvantaged community. You know what? For that community, they don't have to pay for internet. We control that. And I think that's the big steps. There's so many data centers, and you guys can translate this into not nerdy's, or I'll have Jim come up and translate it into not nerdy's. But owning that piece of the puzzle would put us in a different realm. Because then we're not only the smart city has it, but with the smart city that also has interconnection throughout the community and is able to control the internets coming in and out. Now, I know, it's a big idea. It's lofty. But being able to control the data center that would control the internet, that would do the rings and the circles that would allow us to then be able to offer the internet at competitive rates and then control the data in and out as a community, we're basically having our own power company. Because no business, no house, no home can function without data anymore. It's just not done. It might as well be the same as water or power. So those are some of the big issues I see coming down the ways. And if we could be in front of it, I've seen other companies- And if we could be in front of it, I've seen other companies that have done, other cities, because I started doing research on this, that have done this, and adding these resources, not just the how, but the what, makes us stand out. And so the next time Diane or Economic Development or goes out, or a big company comes in and wants to partner, we would then have the resources to be able to offer to them something that would stand us apart. So those are the kind of things I see. What are the challenges facing these goals? Does anyone know a data center for Cyra higher? You know, that kind of thing. I mean, but that kind of thing, you know, what does that mean? It'd be, it takes the hands of, you know, a local, private local partnership of some sort to be able to make that kind of steps. Also, it's educating the community on why this is important. And I think if I told them why having our own internet and the control of the internet through our own fiber and through being able to key the data, also finding some sort of tool, and you guys got to do the research, what is everybody using to crack data? So when we have a problem, we can then pull the data in and calculate, because you know millions of lines of code and pulling all the data, getting an answer is always the hardest problem. What are the strategies we most value? We are a, pull your bootstraps up by our own kind of city, so we want honest answers. We want to know when stuff's good, we want to know if stuff's bad, and we want to know what the best steps of what other community has used to overcome them. Don't pull punches with us, you don't have to be nicey, we like to argue it out, we want to know what's the best, because we were treated so poorly in the past that this is our steps to go in the right direction. So, I mean, being a data, an actual smart city that actually finds answers for stuff by being a smart city would be amazing. Being able to control traffic lights from the Cyrus's desk or the police chief's desk, for me, I mean, that'd be terrible. But, I mean, if we could, yeah, yeah. And what's the community saying, besides the stuff that he said? The community would, the community is excited about how we, the technology seems to bring in more jobs. So that's cool. But now, the community wants to know how it's going to engage the technology in the community. So does this actually mean cheaper internet? Does this mean some sort of educational that's going to go to our STEM and our stuff? What's our path for educating our kids and using these, the smart city to help benefit our community? What are the benefits? You know, it's one thing to say you're a smart city, there's another thing to say like, oh man, we were able to create, you know, 4,500 jobs, and from the 4,500 jobs, we were able to take 200 kids directly out of high school, and they were able to get high-end tech jobs. And from those tech jobs, they were able to stay in our community and be engaged. So, you know, the community is excited about this kind of technology because they see jobs with, it's like, what's in it for them? So when we do these kind of solutions, it's, you know, what am I delivering back to my citizens for making them high-tech? And it can't just be like, we have really fast internet that no one can afford, like that doesn't, I mean, what is that? So, that's everything from a tech nerd. So I hope you got all that notes, I saw you writing, you've been recording. All right, nerd, you're up.
Okay, so, thank you so much for your presentation, and especially as a former city council member, I think I'd really like to see how you take your experience into account when you kind of propose this, especially the fact that, you know, as a smart city, how do we keep track of progress? You know, we keep watching, we have so many different projects that are going on, and we want to be transparent to our, not just the city staff, but also to the residents of the city. And it has to be like a two-way communication, how do we hold ourselves accountable? So one of the key things is to have like a progression tracker, that way we hold ourselves accountable on both ends. That kind of leads into most of this, like, what is the community saying, right? That is where we want this kind of interaction from our citizens, between the community organizations, the government, you know, we have, we want to have this active communication link. This is the future, smart cities are the way to go, you know, it's smart, we started with a phone, like you said, it's 15 years ago, we didn't know the existence of a phone. They had a lot of headwinds when they were trying to propose a touchscreen for a phone, but look at us now, we will not leave home, we will leave home without a wallet, we will not leave our home without our phone. So this is our future, and we're ready for this. And the sooner we can get this kind of technology started, and as we know, our city manager trying to get you guys in speaks for itself for how much we are ready and wanting this. And what are the challenges we face to achieve these goals? We have no challenges, we are ready to face these goals, and whatever we need to get there, we're ready to support. Thanks.
Thanks, Siri. David, Linda?
I guess I'll take this from a slightly different angle, other than planning and development, because I think those comments are pretty well taken here already, and that's the, you know, strong focus here. But I'll talk about an issue area that for us is adjacent to that. So, you know, like every, virtually every city in the United States, we've got older, aging suburban development. And those developments over time don't do so well. They don't age particularly well, because newer developments are built next door and people move on to that, and what's left behind often declines over time. And cities like ours probably were mostly incorporated to deal with that problem, because we felt it at a community level, the systemic level, we felt that decline happening, and we wanted it to stop. And to this day, 22 years later, 20 years later, after we voted, people are still advocating for that, stop the decline, turn it around. And one of the challenges, although we have done more than any other community I'm aware of, to try to combat that, and we've had some success, but one of our consistent challenges in that effort, which we call growing strong neighborhoods, is the accessibility of data to measure our success, because it's very difficult to measure your success in turning a neighborhood around. I can come up with some metrics in my head that we could use to try to measure it, like, what are our houses selling for now on a per-square-foot basis, or a per-bedroom basis, or a combination of those two, compared to similarly aged neighborhoods in the region? And if that index is going up rather than down, then we're succeeding, we're getting people to reinvest in older neighborhoods, improve the properties, and stabilize, you know, our older suburban neighborhood. But if it's going down, we haven't got there yet, we have more work to do. We try to measure it with GIS. I guess I'm kind of interested in what you guys view as your interface with GIS data, where we take every available public data source and stack it on top of each other, and try to figure out for a given parcel, address, maybe it's a store, an apartment, whatever, for a given parcel, how many code enforcement cases have we had there? How many kids absent from school have we had there? How many police calls have we had there? How many ambulance calls? How many other fire calls? How much disorder can we attach to that? You know, ideally, do we have driver's licenses or car tags that have expired, you know, at that address? We build up this GIS network, and we had one specific, I could go on forever about the programs we've done, but one specific program was called Focus on 50. And we were looking for the 50 most problematic addresses or places in Ranch Cordova, and trying to focus our efforts on knocking those off the Focus on 50 list. So the next time we did that, you know, that 50, that set of 50 wouldn't be there anymore, it'd be a different 50, and you just keep going. The problem we have is that doing that analysis is very time-consuming, and we can only do it occasionally as a result. What we need is some sort of an ongoing metric that sort of tells us week by week, how are you doing? How are you doing compared to the region? How are you doing compared to your immediate neighbors? How are you doing compared to your target neighborhoods that you're meeting yourself with? How are you doing just versus your own data internally? And how do you pull all this GIS stuff in so as to best target what code enforcement does, what the police department does? Because they have great intelligence operations going on, and we've brought in more agencies to work on this together than any other jurisdiction I know of. Our collaboration's unbelievable. But we're still lacking this data piece that should be there, and should be readily available to all of our people, from Cyrus's city manager all the way down to the code enforcement officer who's cruising through the neighborhood and has to decide, what street should I go look at? So that's what I'm interested in trying to get to, from a smart city base, is something different than you might hear normally.
Thanks, David. Linda, anything to add?
So I'm going to totally agree with David. He brought the human face to this. It's inspiring to hear, to hear you all and Garrett and Siri talk about data and analytics and that kind of thing, but on the other hand, because we are a city, as David points out, that continues to try to figure out how to provide the same service level to the older neighborhoods as the newer neighborhoods enjoy, that will always be a challenge for us. David has certainly done, and our former colleague Bob, in their work with the League of Cities First Year Suburbs Committee, you know, they've done so much work to try to help answer this question. And you can, you can start with the really basic things that some jurisdictions have had for a long time. So for instance, I remember 25 years ago, doing just a little KFC project in the Denver metro area, and I, just by plugging in, and Colorado is one of the three states that has a different kind of system for enumerating their parcels, and I think Cyrus and Albert probably know what it is, but it's based more on meets and bounds and meridians than it is on, so that it's, it's kind of worldwide or countrywide as opposed to just being common to one particular county or another. And I could, by plugging in that parcel number, I could find out everything I needed to know about that parcel, including what special districts it's in, what the taxes were going to be, and just everything. And so then you add to that the kinds of day-to-day information that David is talking about, and the fact that we always have a data need to know as much as we can about the people who live in different neighborhoods, you know, what education level, the language they speak, just, you can make a huge list of the kinds of things that are important so that we know. You know, you add your, add the information from Metro Fire, and then add the crime statistics from RCPD, and you really get a good picture of what's going on in the neighborhoods. So that would be the, that would be the goal. And the flip side of that is that it's absolutely the challenge.
Thanks, Linda. Yeah, I think I would echo a lot of what I heard here tonight. To me, I would bring it back to connectivity and I think what Linda David alluded to a little bit, I'm trying to remember, I want to say it was the Bloomberg Mayor's Challenge four or five years ago, maybe I was mayor then, when we did it, but I remember one of the, the past winters was a city in England or the UK that was really struggling around figuring out how to keep their, their older residents engaged in the community, and frankly, because of a lack of technology. And so I would just challenge that, as we talk about this more, and I think David, you know, alluded to it, when it comes to, we have older neighborhoods that we're trying to figure out if what we're trying is successful, but also, how are we engaging all of these communities that frankly have some very different origins and histories and experiences and are at different points in their, that's what I'm looking for, in their, in their life cycle, right? We have some that are, you know, 60-year-old neighborhoods, and we have some that are, you know, six-month-old neighborhoods. But how do we use technology to connect all of those, all of those despairing and disjointed communities together to feel like they're one? And I know we talked about this, and we talked about it through the Mayor's, the Bloomberg Mayor Challenge was that, you know, we have three different school districts, we have a different park district, we have different water districts, right? We have communities that were zoned by the county, I know we've had a constituent talk about that more than once tonight, that, you know, there are places that we didn't get a say in how they look or how they're built. And frankly, in some ways, we may not be able to, depending on the laws and the things that were in place before we were ever here. But how do we use technology to enhance the kind of work that Loriann and our neighborhood engagement people are using on a daily basis to connect neighborhoods and to identify leaders and to support community members to solve the problems they want to solve? And to focus on the things that we can solve, and not spend their time necessarily on the things that, you know, have been decided or are going to happen maybe in some way, and really help to prioritize it. But what I, what I really want to see, or I hope that we can continue to look at, is how do we use it, not only to communicate with the city's working on and to get input and to make sure that we're doing what we can that's best for the community, but how do we connect neighbors to neighbors and communities and neighborhoods to each other? And so, and I, and to me, in going to different conferences and sitting in different webinars and other things over the last five years or so, I feel like there's a lot of work that's been done in that space that I hope we get a chance to work on a little bit more. With that, I think everyone spoke on the council. Anything else, Steph, that you need from us on this one?
No, thank you very much for the feedback, and I think this is great input to kind of help us on the next step of developing this roadmap. And we, as was mentioned, we'll be back in the next few months to provide an update. Thank you.
Thank you. And Kim, don't go far, we'll need you for 19.3, but for now, we'll move on to 19.2, which is Veteran Housing Development Project Selection at the former Mather Air Force Base. And I'm turning that over to Stefan, I believe, right?
Yes, that's correct.
I hear you, but do we have a camera on you anywhere?
Yep, we're coming up.
Oh, now I can see on the really small screen, okay. There he is.
All right, good evening, Mayor and City Council, Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the city of Ranch Cordova, here to present the Veterans Affordable Housing Development Project Selection. And I'm going to have a clicker here in just a moment, thank you very much. So the goals for this evening, the staff will present the background, very brief background context for this discussion, a high-level overview of the three proposals received, the staff recommendation, and the next steps that we expect following this discussion for the future project. And then secondly, receive council direction on project selection, either adopting the resolution or providing additional direction. So again, a very brief history of very recent history, as early as last year, the topic of a future veterans' development project came up at our, at our most recent affordable housing notice of funding availability. That led to February of this year, beginning conversations with the county to acquire additional sites out at Mather. And then in June, the county, or the city council set aside $2 million of American Rescue Plan Act funds for a future veterans' housing project, which was then, very shortly after, matched with another $2 million from the county. And then the city issued a request for proposals in July. We received three proposals, one from Mercy Housing California and Veterans Housing Development Corporation, one from Visionary Home Builders, and another from Volunteers of America. And then again, the goals for this evening are to receive the presentation on the three proposals and then make a selection of a project and developer team. So high-level overview of the proposals received, we got one from Mercy Housing California and Veterans Housing Development Corporation. That proposal included 60 units of rental townhomes for veteran families, with a mix of permanent supportive housing units for homeless veterans, as well as 60 apartment units for, rental apartment units for senior veteran households. The proposal from Visionary Home Builders was for 110 apartment units for rental veterans' families, along with additional commercial space and outdoor spaces. And then the third proposal received was from Volunteers of America for 80 units of transitional housing, 44 units of permanent supportive housing, 74 units for family rental apartments for veterans, a commercial kitchen, community room, and outdoor spaces. The staff used the following criteria to evaluate the proposals, including project design and community benefit, including analysis of mixed-use developments and placemaking design elements being weighted higher, project feasibility, including the likelihood of completion, or at least being able to begin construction within 24 months, development and management capacity, preliminary design sketches, site and unit layout, and a city subsidy target of $40,000 per unit. We were very pleased with all of the three proposals received, and being high-quality from In the end, the staff recommended selection of the proposal from Mercy Housing California and Veterans Housing Development Corporation, with that evaluation, including the high level of project feasibility, the lowest development cost per unit, the second highest number of proposed housing units amongst the proposals, excellent development and management experience, mix of housing product type between townhome and apartments, the mix of targeted veterans populations, kind of expanding the populations that are being served out at Mather, and then a mix of placemaking opportunities and commercial use. And the full proposals from each of the developers are included with this item, but I won't be presenting them here this evening. And then before we open up for discussion, just to make sort of the next steps a little bit more clear than mud, we anticipate completing site acquisition with Sacramento County, and then finalizing the project's scope and securing the county funding match, and then preparing the project site for development, including things like environmental evaluation. We'll then submit funding applications to the state for other housing funding programs for the, sort of the larger leveraging of our local dollars. Then we'll complete project entitlements and development agreements, and with any luck, we'll begin construction at the earliest within 2024, much more likely by 2025. So with that, I will open it up for any questions for staff or the applicants.
Let's start with, do we have any public comment for this item?
Yes, we do. Stefan, why don't you put that, the descriptive slide back up? That one?
No, not that one.
Yeah, that's got the basic rundown of what people were proposing, yeah. Yeah, that's good.
So let's take public comment.
The first public comment card that I have is from James Garcia, who is in the council chambers. James, you'll have up to three minutes, and then there are a couple of hands that are raised in Zoom.
Hello, I'm James Garcia, from Stone Creek.
Hang on, James, your mic isn't on.
Oh, sorry.
There you go.
Hello, I'm James Garcia from Stone Creek. Again, love the idea of helping our veterans out with this proposal. Thank you, city, for purchasing all that land. It's great to help our veterans out. After seeing it, I did also look at all three proposals, and I do agree with your staff proposal of the mix. It does appear to give the best variety of units for all of our veterans. There's a big chunk towards the seniors, which is the population that's really at risk here, in my opinion. But I just want to make sure that we bring it back to the council for a final review after we secure that fund. I wasn't sure if that's part of this process, just making sure that it either goes back to council or to the planning commission if they're finally up to speed before this gets done. Because I just want to make sure that the funding is secure before we say, yes, we're going to do this without getting that additional state fund or federal funds, because I think that'd be irresponsible for us as a city to incur this extra debt without all of that. And just making sure that the project does get one more once-over, because again, cost overruns happen. Are we going to hold the developer to those actual proposed prices? So again, thank you again for looking out for our veterans, because I do want them taken care of there. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is via Zoom, Beckett Calvert. I'm going to go ahead and then mute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Beckett, go ahead. Please unmute, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Beckett Calvert, and I'm a resident of Placer County. I am a member of the California Army National Guard as a military police officer, and I am also a member of Local 46 Carpenter's Union. And I have done various volunteer work with the City of Rancho Cordova Police Department. And I think that building affordable homes for our veterans is great, and I highly support this project because veterans deserve better, they deserve well, and they mean so much to our community. They have sacrificed many things for our well-being, and they need to be benefited for that. I would also like to know if this project will have requirements for local hire, use of apprenticeships, healthcare, and prevailing wage? And how are you, as the City of Rancho Cordova, going to ensure that? Will I, a local carpenter and resident of Placer County, be able to work on this project? Or will I have to keep driving to cities like Fairfield and Vallejo and Stockton to find work? Earlier in the meeting, somebody said, "Good enough is not good enough." And we need to ensure that our local workers are receiving fair pay and perfect training to ensure that these buildings are built correctly and with precision. I would love to work in the area that I live so I can be closer to my family and also participate in many of the things in my community. I am also a second-generation union carpenter, and I think that these benefits that I received when I was young and that I will give to my children to benefit from are needed in this community. And I think that those are very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Renee Bays. I'm going to go ahead and then mute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. I want to first thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Renee Bays, and I represent the NorCal Carpenter's Union. I want to say that I am in full support for building affordable homes for our veterans, but I do also want to know what the city council and planning commission are doing to hold the developer accountable to hiring a responsible contractor who will pay the area's standard wages and benefits. I am coming across many projects in the area that are being built where the workers are not only traveling at least two-plus hours to work, but also getting cheated out of a livable wage. Now, when it comes to healthcare, construction workers, particularly those who are not represented by a union, are much more likely to lack healthcare and rely on government safety net programs, depleting what is already overburdened. So policies that require contractors to offer their workers healthcare will also raise standards in the construction industry, while also ensuring that employers who do offer healthcare can compete on a level playing field. Prevailing wage, local hire, healthcare, and apprenticeships all benefit the community. Non-responsible developers and contractors who cheat their workers hurt the community. NorCal carpenters have a healthy list of contractors and are always available to assist in any project, and we're always open for any conversations. So thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Terry, that's all the speakers that I see.
Okay. I'll bring this back to my colleagues. Any directions for staff?
I'll go first? So okay if I go first? So I know of Nation's Finest. I was in a class with ALF where they did a presentation for us, and all the amazing stuff they do at communities. I mean, they make the best hot dogs, because that's what Nation's Finest is. I'm sorry, I apologize. That was messed up. Bye. Sorry, the CEO of Nation's Finest is sitting in the building, and yep, best hot dogs known in the community. This, sorry. No.
Maybe that's what the cafe is for.
Well, you know, they build the hot dogs, they wrap them, they sell them. No, they are one of those loving people that actually finds joy in taking care of our veterans. And what I feel is that in the community, one, I think, working with Mercy Housing and them only adds to the benefit of the community. Our DNA is we take care of our vets. That's in our blood of this city. The city was born as a air force base, and we will do everything in our power to take care of our veterans, to get that functional zero number, which means for everybody in the group, that for every homeless vet that lives in the county, there'll be a home, a place he can lay his head. So I'll always be fighting for that.
Or her head.
Or her head, excuse me, apologize. And I think this would be an amazing addition to our city, and I think the more we can bring in to be able to take care of this community, the better. I think it's only added to the rich culture of our community to have this place, and honestly, it's, I think, the first one that's ever been built next to a VA hospital. So I want to say that we claim that idea, even though it seems like basic logic, that you would put the homeless vet housing next to people that need the drugs to take care of themselves. But, so I'm looking forward to working with Mercy Housing and the, and of course, Nation's Finest to put this up as fast as possible. So I'm thinking like next year will be done. That would be three months. I'm not trying to rush it, but there's no reason to slow down. And then we can get some of these wonderful carpenters to knock it out like real fast, because they're in the area. Sounds great to me. So I agree with your decision, and of course, I look forward to working with the best hot dog vendor in the region.
Thank you. Any other directions for staff?
I have a quick question. There was a city subsidy of 40K per unit. Is it just based on number of units? Like, if they were to build 80, it's just for 80, and so the Nation's Finest is 120 units? So it's...
Yeah, sure. So we just set the target, the subsidy target, just to give, I think, our applicants at least a benchmark of what the city was sort of looking at as far as what would be acceptable or unacceptable based on city subsidy targets. In our notice of funding availability last year, we set a target of $35,000 per unit. But recognizing that with veterans, there's likely additional supportive services, we increased that a little bit to 40,000 as a target, just to give folks sort of, you know, again, a benchmark of what we're short, what we're trying to aim for.
Sounds good. Another question. I've not seen the floor plans of any of these, but just sheer number, obviously, 120 is a much better number than 80. Have you seen in terms of how packed these units are?
Sure. So the sites that we included in this request for proposals are about two to three acres. So 120 units is roughly between 20 to 30 units per acre.
Thank you. Garrett wants me to say that your hot dogs are amazing. I don't eat meat, so I'll take his word for it.
Tofu hot dogs.
Any other questions or directions for staff?
I do.
Go ahead.
You know, per unit cost of homeless housing or affordable housing has been a real budget buster. I don't think the public has a very good understanding of that. Can you give us an idea of per-unit cost in these proposals?
A high-level overview, again, because part of that also depends on what the level of services will be included in that, because the services kind of calculate into that total development cost and increase those quite a lot. And I actually apologize, I don't have the specific numbers in front of me. But for these three proposals, roughly, we're looking at total development cost per unit of between high 400s and somewhere in the 700 or 800s per unit.
How does that square with your 40,000 per unit?
Right. So our local subsidy is only going to be 40,000 of that.
Oh, sorry.
Right. So we'll be leveraging considerably a lot more through state funding and tax credit funding and other programs.
Sorry, was that 700K per unit? So each, like, townhome would be like 700K?
Correct. Yeah, so I apologize, I don't have the specific number in front of me for each of the product types, but yes.
So Stefan, we remember being shocked by the amount of money per unit that it costs to build the initial project over behind the Stagger Inn. Do you remember what the cost per door, cost per unit of that one was?
Yeah, I can apologize, I don't have that specific number either. If I were to hazard a guess, it would be somewhere in the $200,000 per unit range.
And that was 15 years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But, yeah, no, I understand the sticker shock, because buildings like this have a lot of code requirements that...
The state has layered on an enormous number of extra costs.
And the more sources of money you use to put into a project like this, and if we could just do it with local funds, that would drop the cost dramatically. But for everything, whether it's a road project or a residential project, you start adding in the requirements of all of the governments from which we get this money, and that's what raises the cost.
So for a 700K with a 40K subsidy, what's the ROI for the builder? Other than the great hot dogs?
I think in terms of a return on investment, for affordable housing in general, it's not, I mean, these are not for-profit companies. These are not for-profit companies, right? So they're not trying to operate these housing projects for profit. So if they can cover their own operating expenses through the rents that they receive, that's generally what we're aiming for, and to be able to keep the units within, you know, good repair and maintenance. There is a little bit, I believe, of revenue that these projects would be able to receive to cover some kind of rent payment or loan payment to a private lender. So that is another funding source that these projects would be able to benefit from, and that also helps to lower some of the subsidy costs that would come from local government or from state government.
Siri, my take on ROI for a project like this is the quality of life for the people who will live there.
Yeah, I was even trying to say, they're losing money, or it's not even ROI at this point, so.
Siri, the one person that's online, can you speak a little bit closer into the mic? It's really hard to hear you online.
I see I'm still in sticker shock.
Yeah, that's typical.
What Donald does for a living. Donald, why does it cost so much?
It costs so much because of a lot of the things that people just said, and it's also you're dealing with people that, you know, for the most part, can't pay a lot in rent. So that those subsidies and other things have to be made up in other places. And so, yeah, I mean, you know, I would say 15 years ago, 200, 300,000 was the going rate per door in this region. It's, you know, I remember when I worked on financing a deal that, for the first time, we crested 400,000 in Sacramento per unit. And yeah, like David said, I mean, you can go look at places in California that are nearly a million a unit. And it's land cost X and development, you know, impact fees, the fact that we have Prop 13, so property taxes don't keep up with housing units, which is a whole other problem that we have. And so we have to extract that in development fees and impact fees in the beginning. And also, if you look at these three projects, and I do want to ask it in a second if we can move to the slide that actually is asking the questions and not just comparing these. But if you just look at how these are comparing them, you know, permanent supportive housing units on the bottom there are much more expensive than townhomes for families and apartments for senior households, right? Both of those units likely will have some rent-paying tenants to them when you have permanent supportive housing. Maybe you have some subsidies and housing vouchers and other things that come into play with it, but depending on where you have your sources of income and subsidies, yeah, these get very expensive very quickly. Can we move to the last slide, though? I don't know who's in charge of the PowerPoint here, but, yeah. So I'm fine with the selection that's in front of us. I think, you know, Mercy has delivered a fantastic project so far. The only thing that I would say is I'm fairly disappointed that there's no transitional housing as part of their project. And if there is a way to do that, this is really the last type of affordable housing that you can still get funding for transitional housing. And so I would just push back to the development team and staff to say, is there a way to envision 10 or 20 units being transitional, even if it was working... ten or twenty units being transitional, even if it was working with um because I believe Nation's Finest is the 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 development partner in these, and they're, and they're developing the other side of it and and actually, let me stop and say, Stefan, did I not, did I not miss that? Like, there is no transitional housing in this proposal, right?
You're correct. So the proposal as as submitted didn't include any transitional housing. I think there, there does need to still be some additional discussion with the county because of their, sort of their um their goals for the counties matching ARPA dollars.
Yeah, we'll get to that later. That that's something to talk about tonight, in my opinion, but um but in general, yes, there are some, there are some additional funds contributed, either land that we may be able to acquire, and then also some subsidies from the county that may have some earmarks to it. But I would just say that if there, there's one thing that I feel like is lacking right now for me, is that the the mix of units, I I I'd be willing to sacrifice both of those mixed, both of those unit types that they're proposing. Uh, if it meant in equal parts or relative uh transitional housing, because I literally, it's the only place that you're gonna get sustainable funding for transitional anymore is for veterans. The VA is the only one left that that will even consider and HUD doesn't. And so uh, to me, it's an opportunity lost to be talking veteran housing and not have some sort of component of transitional to it. Um, but in general, no, I I I like the direction. I'm not surprised with the recommendation. Uh, you know, I think, I think we have a strong pool of development uh proposals here. I mean, Visionary Home Builders out of Stockton is a fantastic nonprofit. Uh, and we're lucky that they showed an interest here, and I hope that we can engage with them and keep them engaged here to wanna you know, look at some other projects as they do fantastic work up and down the valley. Um, and then I think the other one was uh VA, VOA. Again, one of the largest nonprofit housing developers in in the US, not just California. Uh, so I think we have, you know, top tier development partners that we, that we were able to select from. I know there were even a couple other ones that I think started hearing that these are the ones that were proposed, and we had some, even some other really great ones that decided not to apply. Um, or go to, you know, go to all the trouble to do it. Um, but so hats off to Stefan and the rest of the team for, you know, getting this to the fini- getting this this far. I think one of the, the members of the public, you know, that mentioned something about, you know, seeing this again, this is not the finish line, this is kind of the beginning. We still need to get tax credits and allocations of vouchers and stuff from the VA and all kinds of other folks to to make these things come to fruition, but um it's really exciting if we can add more of these units into, into, into the city and, you know, take care of the folks that really were the reason behind the founding of this city, which is that we're, you know, we're, we're a military community. That's how, that's how we got here. Um. So with that, Stefan, you got anything for tonight?
I have the direction. Um, if we want to make, we do have a a resolution attached to this item, if you want to make.
Oh, okay.
So I um, I'm gonna move approval of the resolution uh with staff's recommendation. Um, and I personally specifically like the Mercy Housing proposal because it's our first opportunity to serve families and um, and I really support the mix of generations. One of the most successful um affordable housing projects I've ever seen was in Austin. And they had three, there were three buildings in this project, and each of those three buildings served a different group of people. But they all socialized together and they all were on the playground together. And um, and I really appreciate that mix of generations.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
So a motion by Bud, a second by Sander, roll call please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. You know, look at my notes really quick before we move on to nineteen point three. Um, Adam, Stacy, Cyrus, were we supposed to vote on nineteen point one and did we? No, we don't need to? Okay. All right. My, my expanded agenda has a
It was general direction from council.
Okay, that's just, that's what I thought. And then all of a sudden, as I'm writing down the roll call for this one, I'm realizing I didn't do it on the last one. Uh, thank you, staff. Thank you, Stefan and everybody for your hard work on that. Moving on to nineteen point three, fiscal year update preliminary year end financial reports and a resolution authorizing budget amendment. And with that, I think we're handing it back over to Kim.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Kim Duran-Carr, Georgia Administrative Services Director. So my presentation this evening is to provide a brief review of the preliminary fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two general fund. Um, year-end performance, and I always uh caveat this with preliminary because we are uh, just about getting ready to go through our annual audit process, so some numbers do change during then, but overall um, these numbers are pretty much close to year end. Nope. Thank you. Now it's working. Okay. So moving on to the next slide, um to, so we started off fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Uh, we were coming, starting to emerge from COVID and you know, the lockdowns, and we weren't really sure exactly where the economy, how quickly the economy was going to recover from that. And what we experienced was uh an economy, economy that res- rebounded far more quickly than I think any of us really anticipated. So that had a positive impact on our revenues this past fiscal year. Also, in affecting our uh finances is uh continuing new growth and development in the city. Uh, we continue year after year to see new highs uh on the revenue and expenditure side when it's related to new growth and development. And one thing that uh I will mention here is that a lot of this has been driven by residential construction. However, this past year, what we saw was our commercial construction, building permit activity really um contributed strongly to that uh number this past year. And then lastly, uh, just that we continue to have uh expenses and revenues coming into the city that are uh related to some of the COVID-related activities uh that the city has been engaging in. Um, that do continue to impact our finances, but are really more one-time in nature and not recurring. So those are some of the things that you'll hear about and see in the numbers this evening. So jumping into the numbers, um, and just to walk through this uh slide before you, so the first four columns uh show prior year actuals. Uh, the fifth column is our budget for this past fiscal year, and then the last column on the right is the actual performance for last fiscal year. So it provides some perspective of both trend analysis and how we did uh compared to budget. So we starting with taxes, which is uh over three quarters of our revenue budget. So property taxes, um, as the first line item up there. Uh, we've seen steady continuing growth in property taxes um as a result of increasing home values and new growth over recent years, and we ended the year about three hundred thousand dollars above our budget for property taxes. Sales tax uh continues its tremendous upward trend uh this past fiscal year, increasing five percent over the prior fiscal year and surpassing the budget by over two million dollars. And some of the major contributors to this increase, uh, we continue to see uh, see a lot of revenues coming into the city from the county pool. This is due to um an increasing amount of online orders, which is how it funnels into the city. Uh, we've also seen some new uh automo- used automotive dealerships open up in the city that has positively impacted our sales tax. Some new business-to-business activity as well as uh rising fuel prices, which is unfortunate for all of us uh driving gas-powered vehicles, but does uh positively impact our sales tax numbers. The next item is transient occupancy tax. This is the uh commonly referred to as our hotel tax. Uh, this is one of our revenue sources that was very much impacted by the COVID downturn um and lockdowns. So we saw it drop down to a low of two point seven million in uh the prior fiscal year twenty-twenty-one uh due to COVID. And then um as we started to get to the spring of that year, we started to start uh see some rebound occurring in the hotel sector. And actually ended this past fiscal year at three point eight million, so just about two hundred thousand dollars over the budget there, so um, strong return uh for that revenue source. Utility users tax has uh is kind of the, a steady state revenue, um, has kind of hovered around three point five each year and has continued to stay at that level this past year. And then other taxes is kind of a roll-up of some of our smaller tax uh revenue sources. And one that's rolled up in here that I do want to highlight is the property transfer tax. This is the tax that is paid when a home turns over, when a home sells in the city. Um, you pay a document transfer or property transfer tax, and that number has kind of hovered in recent years about four hundred thousand dollars. And in fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, we actually saw that number double to over eight hundred thousand, which is just kind of gives you some idea of the magnitude of the amount of homes that were selling and turning over last year. Um, as well as kind of the increasing because it's based on market value or sales price, and just how that is affecting the numbers. So overall, a very positive, um, you know, look as far as our revenues are concerned. Uh, but again, some of these, I would say, were uh somewhat anomalies in that it was due to just a, an extremely robust market that we saw last year. Moving on to the next slide, uh, this is sort of all of our general fund revenues by major category. Taxes I just covered in more detail. Uh, moving down franchise fees, again, this uh is pretty steady year to year. We do see some increases um as a result, usually of rate increases for those utilities that pay those fees. The next category licenses, permits and fees. Uh, you will see, this is the number that I was mentioning earlier. Where we saw a tremendous increase um in our commercial building permit revenues uh last year. And that was the result of some of the major big developments, UC Davis, Solodyne, um Sprouts, so on. So a lot of commercial activity that came into the city. Uh, again, I would say, you know, it was about a million dollars over what we would normally see in a given year, actually about one point five million over. And not something that I would expect to see repeated year after year, so something to keep in mind there. Uh, fines and forfeitures. Now this one, a little bit of an opposite trend, uh, due to the fact that some of our red light cameras. Um, we had some different things going on with red light camera fines over the course of the year that impacted the revenues, which is why that number came in below budget. This next category, uh, use of money in property. Now there's a big negative number here that looks really scary and awful. Um, what this is, is the fair market value adjustment that the city is required to make at fiscal year end to its investment portfolio. So this is a strictly an accounting entry. And what it represents is if the city had to sell and liquidate its entire investment portfolio on June thirtieth, we would have lost over four million dollars. Now, the, that, and that is common, that happens commonly in a market where interest rates are rapidly rising because our portfolio is held over a term of, you know, uh, usually about two to three years is our duration. So those uh, those investments are locked in at a lower rate than where rates are, and so that devalues the portfolio. So that is why this, we have this tremendous um accounting book loss. It is reversed on July first, so you know, I don't want anybody to think that we are actually losing money. We are not. Um, but it is a required entry that does have an impact in our, on our income statement. The next uh category, intergovernmental. Uh, this one is another one where uh the last couple of years, you see some large numbers, much larger than we would typically see here. And this is a result of, again, when I said COVID-related activity. Uh, we had the Great Plates Program uh underway, and we were getting reimbursements from FEMA over the course of last two years. And we saw two point three million dollars of reimbursements come in, into that um category. So again, that's really one-time in nature related to a specific program and not something that we anticipate um to be repeated. And then the rest of the categories, charges for services, um, really indicative again of sort of the robo- robust um development activity in the city. And uh, that kind of brings us to the end of revenues. So overall uh, we exceeded our revenue budget by about three point six million. Any questions before I move on from that slide? Moving uh onto the expense side uh by category, uh, really uh a year where we came in very tight with the budget overall in each category. Uh, we had some savings on, in personnel costs and uh some savings in a few other categories, but overall came in uh very tight with our budget. And then the last uh category, capital outlay, million-dollar expenditure for the purchase of some land. So overall, we came in just around where we anticipated on the expenditure budget. So the general fund year-end snapshot, uh, income statement, overall, we are ending the year with a three point seven million dollar surplus. Uh, tonight's item before you is not only a report, but also has a proposed, um, has budget amendments and a resolution uh associated with it. There is one proposed budget amendment uh for the general fund to transfer eight hundred thousand dollars of that surplus um, towards the Ranch of Cortova Youth Center project. There are some additional funds needed, needed to see that to the finish line. So that is for your consideration this evening. And then um, the general fund reserve policy uh that we uh amended last year. The way that works is that the, if that budget um amendment were to be adopted, the remaining surplus of two point nine million would be allocated fifty percent to our two main revenue, uh, reserve funds, the capital facilities fund and then the infrastructure fund. So that's how that would um play out uh if the council chooses to follow that recommendation. Any questions on that before I move on?
Uh, could, could you go into detail of what is the capital facilities fund?
So it is a city reserve fund um that we set aside funds for basically capital investments. So funds in that um that go towards, they would go towards like the youth center project. They've gone towards the acquisition of the Corporation Yard. Major facility improvements to any city-owned facilities come from that fund, so it's a reserve fund for city facilities. And then the infrastructure fund is utilized by our Public Works Department, and they incorporate um, any revenues that come into that fund into their capital improvement program. So they'll put it towards paving projects and other things.
Improvement of the city.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Can you give us an idea of what the uh total cost of the youth center is at this point? Do you have a, a ballpark?
I'm gonna ask Megan Siren to come up and answer that. I don't know.
I don't object to this change. I'm just curious about the total.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, youth center budget currently is about eight million dollars, including that eight hundred thousand.
Okay, thank you.
And the funds from the congressman?
Um, the funds from the congressman is mainly for operations of the first year. So that is going towards this current, um, once we start opening the youth center.
So it's not included in the eight million?
It is not.
Got it, okay.
Other questions for staff, or can we keep, keep going, or? What are we thinking? Was that the end of the presentation?
I, I have one more slide, so um
Go ahead.
No other questions on this. I'll move on to the last slide, uh, which is just a quick overview of Community Enhancement and Investment Fund. So this is uh both Measure H and Measure R. The Measure H budget, uh, we did have incorporate some, a couple of amendments over the course of the past fiscal year because we knew revenues were coming in above budget. So our current Measure H budget is at eleven point two million. Our actual revenues coming in are about eleven point eight, so we have about a six hundred thousand dollars of unallocated uh revenues for Measure H. And then on the Measure R side, uh, the budget for this year, because we kind of adopted a fifteen month um, early on, uh, when we first um began on Measure R, so ten million dollars was sort of that safe uh number that we used going into this. And again, similar to Measure H, uh, they came in about eleven point eight million, so we have about one point eight million there to be allocated. Um, and there is a staff recommendation uh open to council discussion on how to use those funds, uh, about two point four million. Uh, could be set aside for what we know is a property acquisition that is kind of uh coming our way in the coming fiscal year. Uh, that we are recommending that those funds could be set aside for if the council desired.
Kim, is this two, would this be, two point four be in addition to the one point four from the capital fiscal fund in the previous slide?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
The one, I know, just clarify, the one point four million in the prior slide going to the capital facilities fund does not necessarily mean that's going to go towards the property acquisition. It could, um, but it could be used for a variety of projects.
And this two point four is just for acquisitions?
Should the council want to move in that direction, that is the recommendation.
We're not deciding that.
No, I am, yeah.
So that concludes my presentation this evening. Uh, happy to receive an So that concludes my presentation this evening, uh, happy to receive any feedback on the proposed budget amendments and answer any questions.
Thanks, let's start with public comment.
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment for this item, and there are no hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay, uh, bring it back to the council, any questions or directions you'd like for staff?
Seeing none, I will move approval of the two requested budget amendments, um, if I remember correctly, number two.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, if one, the check, was there anybody else that had anything to say before we ask for a second? Hearing none, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Budge, a second by Sander, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulapati.
Yes.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Budge.
Yes.
Mayor Terry.
Aye. Okay, nineteen point three is agreed to, uh, moving on to council requests for future agenda items.
So, um.
Recording in progress.
I have one thing before it looks like we go into closed session. I would like to start discussing, um, what I talked about, about, um, what it comes to owning our own data and doing that piece of the puzzle, since the fiber is now connecting into our city, and that would be acquisitions of data centers and stuff like that, but that's high-level tech, and I know that's down the way, but I'd like to have that discussion with everybody as internet becomes a utility and not just internet, actually, what that means to the city. Right, exactly, it's not a necessity, it's.
Mayor, I said a necessity, not a luxury.
I love that.
Garrett, my only question to you would be, why wouldn't that be something we would cover under a future agenda item for a smart city?
It's more, there is other opportunities that have come about in the recent, uh, uh, close future, and so I'd like to bring it before council, and so I'd like to talk to us as a.
Do you, wow, okay, I, I guess we can talk about this at a different point, but to me, that would make sense if there was a specific opportunity to discuss, but if it just was part of the plan, wouldn't it be part of the larger plan that we just discussed tonight?
There's a couple specific opportunities I'd like to actually discuss for Rancho, but I'd like to do it in a group, so we can actually talk about it.
Okay. Um, anybody that wants to agree with Garrett on that, so that we can add it? Our standard is to usually have three?
Sure.
Second?
I will.
Uh, it's four, there you go, okay.
What about you? Say yes.
What?
You say yes, too, five.
I think we could have covered it with the next, with, when we talk about the same thing again, but I'll go with it. Uh, any other requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, we're gonna, uh, hang on, let me make sure, are we having to appoint real property negotiators? I don't think so. No, right?
You've done that previously.
We already did it before, okay. So with that, we will adjourn to closed session, we'll be out to report after we're done.